I'd like to call to order the work session on Monday, November 9th, 2015. We are here except, do we know if --
She's unloading.
Okay, so can we go, do I have to, she's out there, can I just go ahead? All right, thank you. We have two items on the agenda. The first item is a joint presentation from Development Services, Economic Development, and Engineering on the 2015 Customer Survey. Michelle Laurie, Economic Development Director, Christopher Baker, Development Services Director, and Rebecca Zook, Engineering Director, will present. Oh, we've got all the powerful people here. Here they are. All right. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. Rebecca, Michelle, and I are really pleased to be with you tonight in order to provide an update on the enhancements that our three departments are providing in regards to customer service and the development continuum, or as you may have heard, the hello to CFO, or also known as recruitment to ribbon cutting. As you know, the development continuum involves all three of our departments, economic development, development services, and engineering, and we three here at the table realize that our departments and us as professionals individually cannot be successful unless we are all successful as a team and our departments work together. And speaking of a team, we just wanted to highlight the fact that we have many of our staff in the back who are here firsthand to witness our conversation about customer service this evening, and we wanted to take a moment just to thank them for being here and recognizing them and their attendance.
Well, we'll welcome them because that's additional hours for them, so they're making a sacrifice. We understand that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, our entire building is in place because of the customer, meaning those businesses, developers, and others who are investing in our community and creating more revenue and opportunities for our residents. Our objectives then with enhancement to the development continuum are to create two outcomes, which both originate from the leadership or the directors, the three of us. First, we need to generate changemakers. Everyone in the organization can be a changemaker if they have two things. One is the right approach, which is to act as a problem solver. Secondly, they must have the active support of their leadership, and that's active support. The directors also need to create cohesion among the team by continually emphasizing the big picture, which is the successful development of the city.
Now, before we jump into the recent meetings and survey that we took, I did want to touch upon the accomplishments that have occurred over the last year or two. One of the ones that was put in place about a year and a half ago was over-the-counter plan review. It was known at one time as permit by appointment, but it was realized that we were doing some plan review, so we just wanted to modify that so that we can include more minor TIs. Now, this is for commercial use, and it involves some minor TI changes, nothing structural, and has limitations as to the size, but it has been a huge benefit and well-received by our customers. In addition, permit by email has also been put in place about a year and a half to two years ago. We receive in excess of 200 permits by email every month. Those are processed within a 24-hour to 48-hour period, and they're primarily utilized by residential. It could be a patio addition, and when I mean, not an addition of the home, but a patio added on, as well as a pool permit. It can be some minor electrical, plumbing, things of that nature. Also, a few months ago, we started the simultaneous review of the commercial site plan and a special-use permit. What that does is actually save our customer two to three months in the process. Instead of having to run those one after the other, we can do them concurrently. One of the other items that's been done over the last year or two is we've mapped some of our most common processes, and this is, the process mapping is something that we have begun to utilize throughout the city as it relates to the lean tools. And so, we've done some of that process mapping, and we are in the process of analyzing it to see where we can maybe cut out any overlap or redundancy and eliminate any waste that we have in the process. A couple other items I did want to touch on, not accomplishments, but just something we are doing as a group, is looking at other opportunities within the city that we could potentially utilize. We're looking at other municipalities and see what they have to offer. Some examples might be self-certification, the one-and-done program, as well as annual facilities permit. So, these are items that we're just reaching out to take a first blush at, to see if those can be utilized here at the city.
Councilor.
I know at one time we had talked about when something goes back or gets redlined, or whatever the technical term is, is that a copy go back to the actual owner of the project as well as the architect, because we had found in the past sometimes the architect was playing off the city, the city's what's holding it up. So, I think, and I'm hoping we're still doing that, is we would copy the actual owner to make sure they were in the loop, as if there was any issues coming through the system so they were aware of, so the architect couldn't kind of point the finger one way or the other. They knew exactly what was happening. Are we still doing that?
Absolutely. That is something that we are starting to do, is interact with both the customer and the applicant, whether that applicant is the architect, or the engineer, or representative of the particular company, because again, we want to make sure that they're having the most up-to-date information so that they can react to those as well as meeting with us if there are any concerns throughout the process.
So, both of them are getting it at the same time, essentially.
Correct.
Thank you.
We wanted to hear from our customer, because obviously, that's why we're here. They're our most important aspect of what we do every day. And we wanted to find out about our processes, how they're, are they efficient and effective for their needs, how our communication is, how is the duration of our process approval, and how is the quality of our customer service? The city had previously been utilizing a customer service survey that had a minimal response rate, and because of that, we felt that we needed to really have a broader perspective. So, in August of 2015, we utilized Survey Monkey and sent out approximately 750 surveys to our customers that represent design professionals such as engineers and architects, business owners, and real estate professionals, in order to ask questions about how we are doing. And this is really a critical point, because Rebecca, Michelle, and I all may believe in that we deliver very high customer service, but frankly, it's the perception of our customer that matters the most and has the greatest weight. And we needed to identify opportunities for improvement as well, based on their feedback.
So, we received, Christopher said, we sent out about 750. We received 55 surveys back, or a response rate of about 7%. And looking at the big picture, we have reasons to be proud, as more than 75% of respondents rated their customer service experience at excellent or above average. We also received some positive feedback as to specific things like the talent of the staff, as well as the customer service received. However, we also see that we have work to do toward enhancing the customer experience, as 7% of respondents rated their customer service experience as poor, which is unacceptable to us and the team.
Sherri.
It's almost like the voting rates, isn't it, when we look at that? I want to acknowledge for the staff that's here, the 49% and the 27%, that's a large number of people that are really, really happy. Are we going to go back and maybe specifically contact those people and find out what was it? Because like Joe was saying about, you know, the architects, sometimes it's not our staff that's the problem.
Sure, sure. And we did, well, we, this is an anonymous survey, so we felt that people could be pretty upfront with us, but we did have several people, we did have a question on there and that said, would you like us to contact you? And we did have several people, and I'm not sure if they were in that poor category, but they were in some of the categories that had some issues, and I know that you reached out to them, Christopher?
Correct. There was four respondents who wanted a director to contact them, and some were Michelle's under engineering and some were under development services. And we did, in fact, reach out and debrief with those people, or those respondents. As Michelle indicated, it was anonymous. That was purposeful, so that we could get a very high response rate to our survey questions, but we did, in fact, meet with those customers who wanted us to, and we met with them and got feedback that we have since utilized.
Joe.
Yeah, I like Survey Monkey. We use it at the school. The fact it's anonymous, I think it's real important to try to get some honest feedback as opposed to knowing where it's coming from. But I guess my question is, and I don't know what the answer to it is, but how do you get the percentage up? Anonymous, you would think you'd get a higher percentage of, you know, of sending the information back in, and my math, 55 divided by 700 is less than, you know, less than 10%. So, how do you actually work, or you know of any other cities that have had experience with Survey Monkey, and what type of ways or strategies to try to get the actual recipient count up?
Raffle.
But we can't do that constitutionally.
I'm kidding.
Well, and let me just touch on that a little bit. The respondents were a pool of individuals we had dealt with over the last one year, two years, three years, so it could have just simply been that some of those had moved on and maybe had gotten to a point where they had said, well, it was fine, I don't need to add anything. Now, what we're going to do, and we'll touch on it at the end, is that we are going to actively reach out to a sixth-month pool from this point into March and actually contact those people throughout the process, as well as specifically use Survey Monkey to get, again, some honest, good feedback. So, we hope our percentage is going to increase, because it's going to be people that just dealt with us.
Well, there's a couple things. It's just the same with us, as council. The people that are happy normally don't reach out that many times to us, so it's always the unhappy people. So, in this case, you're very fortunate. There are a lot of happy people that responded to you, but I don't know how, if I thought there was a way that we could get people to respond, we can't even get people to vote.
Our buildings are in the 20s. It'd be nice if we had this above.
I don't disagree with you, Joe. I'm just saying, this is kind of an infection that's across all cities right now. People just don't respond until something really, yes, Sherilyn.
In my experience, no matter how often you tell them that it's anonymous, that the people who are happy will respond, because they really don't care if you know who is doing it or not, but if they have something negative to say, they're a little bit intimidated, no matter how often you tell them, that there will be some kind of retaliation. And that's what I hear over and over again, is that, you know, I don't care what they say, I know they can figure out who I am, and I don't need any more trouble. I've already had trouble going through the process. I mean, I just, that's, I guess that's kind of human nature, and it isn't specific to Goodyear. That's part of the, it's just what it is.
Joanne.
Well, going through the process, actually, you know, I think some of this time, it's going to take time, just in general. You know, it's amazing that I've seen from my architects, my contractors, my subs, everybody's got the, it's a stigma. Oh, you've got to get through the city. Oh, the time, that it's going to take forever to get this and that. I mean, it's just ingrained, I think, unfortunately, in a lot of people's minds, and it's going to take time to show that these efficiencies are in place, things are occurring faster, it's not such a bear to get through. And in fact, you know, I've just seen, going through my project, that people are going, wow, this was great. Now, I will have to say that seeing the side of, because I was really pushing, make sure that whatever is my architect is putting through and seeing, I'm seeing. And so, you know, I caught one of my contractors that didn't even have the right names on the application, that should have been mine, that they had the wrong things. It's like, really? And so, you know, I'm seeing too, where people are making mistakes, and that had nothing to do with the city. That was my own people, you know, and so, you know, that was beneficial to see. I would also have to say that I know that, you know, I've said it already before, but I think something that, part of that customer service experience is being proactive in the sense that, yes, if problems do arise, you are looking for a solution. If there are things that you can say ahead of time, whether this is somebody's very first project, or this is obviously their first project in Goodyear, or Arizona for that matter, it's the experience that your staff has that they should feel empowered to say, well, you know what, in the last 20 years, the developments we've seen, I'll have to tell you, you have a great project, but you know what, if you tweak this a little bit, it would be a better outcome. You know, I mean, we've just seen that with simple things, as the way our parks are put together in developments, that could have been a different, you know, layout to, I mean, just recently with my own project, where we were struggling with a problem that, you know, the fire inspector really thought it through, looking for a solution for us. And so, you know, there's just things that continually improve, but making sure that your staff feels empowered to say, you know what, this is a great project, but if you did A, B, or C, I can tell you right now, I think you would have a better outcome that we've seen occur in our city, or in Arizona, or whatever, because, you know, people like to hear those things, because they want their project to work here. They want their project to be the best. They're not, you know, sometimes people shy away of giving great feedback, because they think it's going to hurt their feelings or something, but if it's not a criticism, but it's a, hey, we're in this together, and you know what, I would see how this would make an impact for the positive, then they should feel that they can give that input.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay, go ahead.
So, I think that's okay for this side, yeah.
Okay, and so, in addition to the surveys, Christopher, Michelle, and I also had the opportunity to meet with several of our customers face-to-face, to hear what worked for them and what didn't work for them. And most importantly, I'd like to thank them for taking the opportunity to meet with us, but also to be very candid with their experiences, because I'm sure that was, you know, they had gotten through the process, they may have wanted to just move on, but we really reached out to them and we wanted to hear from them, so I very much appreciate them taking that time.
I have a question. Was there anybody that came back a second time, you know, they've already done a project in Goodyear, and they came back to do another one of some sort, or anything like that? Oh, somebody's smiling.
The city manager, I answered.
Mayor, specifically, one we can talk about is Sub-Zero. They have not formally announced that they're expanding, but they bought the property, they have their team onboard. But I'm just saying, that's one where we, it was a bit more difficult, you know, round one, and we actually had met with them, and they provided a lot of feedback, and it was one where there, I would just say, we had to re-earn the trust, and we've absolutely done that since, because of their expansion and the relationship we have. In fact, this week, there was an email from the team members of Sub-Zero reflecting on Ron Jones, the plant manager, saying that they're, at this point, they're ahead of where they've been at with other projects, so very pleased with where they're at, and this is round two for them. So, that's one that immediately comes to mind.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So, what I can say is, from our debriefs, although we had wonderful comments about their experience, there were the areas where we needed to focus on improving, and they were the same themes that we saw in the customer service survey, which is timeliness, responsiveness, and the overall helpfulness of our staff.
So, that begs the question, what are we doing? Well, we are in the process of rebuilding. On Friday, Michelle, Rebecca, and I worked with the lean team, which is, and we have to thank them, because they put in hours and hours to help us be successful, and the city be successful as well. Lena Dixon, Tim Fisher, Vicky Lackey, and Kim Bradford, the lean team, have, are, have and are continuing to provide a lot of resources for us. But what we've done is, on Friday, we unrolled the lean initiative in our building. It encompasses all three of our departments, and it includes gimbal walks. The three of us are actively walking the building, working with our staff in their workspaces to identify obstacles and help remove those obstacles, so we can increase the empowerment of the staff, the helpfulness of the staff, the timeliness of the staff, and also build camaraderie, teamwork, esprit de corps, and this is an important thing. We just started it today. We're all learning. This is going to evolve a little bit over time, but it is a very important aspect of the lean principles. Additionally, we're utilizing visual production boards. That way, every staff member in every department has a board, so you can see the projects, where they are in the process, that we can identify any potential roadblocks, help to overcome those roadblocks, and also proactively engage the customer when necessary to move projects through the approval system. And we're doing this in order to meet and/or, hopefully, we want to, this is our goal, exceed their customer service expectations. And the visual production boards are quite an easy way in order to help us ascertain where projects are in the process, as well as the other team members working on the project as well. Additionally, we're utilizing stand-up meetings. The managers in each one of our three departments meet with his or her staff for 15 minutes every morning to identify what's on their plate that day, what roadblocks they have they may be experiencing, and general coordination. And then, at nine o'clock every day, Rebecca, Michelle, and I meet with our managers in order to see what issues may need to be elevated, so that we can deploy resources or leverage other departments for solutions, in order to proactively move projects forward, as opposed to just kind of waiting in abeyance. It's a proactive approach to customer service that we're utilizing. We're also assigning one person in the development continuum to actively participate in all of the stand-up meetings, so there is a continuous flow of knowledge and information on where projects stand throughout the entire development approval process. And then, it's also to remind our team why we're here, and as Michelle indicated earlier, we're here to successfully develop the city and help build a local, strong economy.
I'm going to just generically ask the question and let the three of you decide who's going to answer. Do you see, this is very exciting, so I'm very happy to see it. Do you see a correlation or the ability to connect, I guess, your performance measurement system in these changes? I mean, how do you see that happening?
The short answer to that is yes. We, all three of us will be reevaluating our performance metrics in order to match up with this initiative, because right now, they don't necessarily correlate. So, the short answer to your question is yes. I know you want to say something.
Thanks, Christopher. And what I would add to that is, today, our metrics are individual in our, and I'll say silos, but within our departments, but what makes the most sense, or the kind of questions that we really get from our customers that reach out to Michelle and her team, is how long is it going to take me before I can open my door? When am I going to get my CFO? Today, we have, well, the site plan is this piece, and then construction documents, and then the construction. So, we are initially starting with the individual pieces, but we're rolling that up into the overall hello to CFO. So, when we talked earlier about the visual production boards, we're going to have visual production boards outside of everyone's cubicle, but then that's going to roll up into an overall plan review production board, and then it'll roll up into an inspection and plan review and site plan board that we, as the directors, working with our managers, can actually see where it is throughout the process. So, the goal is to take a look at our metrics. They're meaningful, but is there a more meaningful metric that can assist our customers?
Thank you.
Go ahead. Joe, do you have a question? Okay, go ahead. Wally.
Are you finding that the staff is not taking the maximum amount of time to look at each plan? I know we have a set amount of time, and I would hope that the staff would not take the max on every single step in that plan, because, as you just said, every day that that store's not open is a day we're not getting any revenue. And if the word gets out that this city is like we did with Winco, we want you to open as quick as you can. We'll help you. It's a message that it needs to filter down to everybody that touches that plan, so that they're on the same team of why we're doing what we're doing. It's not that anybody was doing things wrong, but we just need to take another look and try to expedite some of this stuff, and I don't know if we, I don't want to say not be so picky on things, but maybe I will say not be so picky on stuff, because it still is the stuff that drives you nuts.
That was a lot of leading questions to you, and it's giving a message out to the public, so we just need to clear that. Can you just kind of clear up that little, just a little bit of what she's referring to?
So, what I would like to say in response to that is, staff will always conduct a thorough review, comprehensive and concise in a timely fashion. That part won't change. The piece that we're looking at right now is, we might have a plan come in, and we provide 40 comments, and it goes back out, and possibly, the respondent may not understand all of our comments, so maybe they only respond to 20. So, instead of just marking up that, our plan is to reach out, again, be very proactive, reach out and set up a meeting with our customers to go over our comments. And so, we may start by setting on the second review. If we are not very close to approval, we're going to set up a meeting internally with that customer, go over everything, because I want to learn if possibly the information we have on the website isn't clear enough. When we made our comment, did we not very clearly indicate how to make the correction? So, it's really a learning process for all of us to make sure that we're providing the best, and that our customers do understand what is being required.
Well, I think it's sometime with the customer coming into your city that hasn't done anything in your city. So, there could be other cities that have been shorter, because they don't require some of the things, but maybe the things we are requiring is going to be, in the end, better for the customer and the city. So, I know that falls into it. So, they come with this, an idea, this is the way it's going to be, and this is the timing. Did you just? Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. If I may interject for a second. This, your comment, Mayor, is exactly on point, is if we're going to be having a, what we've deemed a mini-series about development policy, and it's directly, one of the questions we're going to have a conversation with council about is, what are we looking at in terms of city regulations? Does the council want to see all these projects come through? Can we create a mechanism where we can administratively approve more things to shorten time up? These are the questions that we're going to be asking you for some policy direction on in the future, and we look forward to that.
I think all of us will welcome that.
Yes.
Joanne.
Well, and I just want to say that, you know, I realize a lot of times, projects where people from the outside think that it's sitting at the city, like we're slowing the process down. And even with, you know, developers I've spoken to, there are things that are out of our control, and I truly see it with some of our utility companies. And I think that if we can be helpful to our customers in going above and beyond, and if we have to make phone calls to some of these, you know, companies that they're having to deal with, and when I'm, and I'm really speaking of utility companies, then we should do our best to help them through that process, because I've been hearing a lot about that lately. And unfortunately, in the big picture, it seems like it's stuck at the city, but it's really not. And so, there's just always, you know, what somebody perceives is going on to what reality is, and I think that, you know, back to customer service, if there's any way of, you know, talking to some of these people to help them realize that this client is all of our clients, and we want this project to come to the West Valley, and so, you know, keep going forward with happiness and gusto. Thank you.
Joe.
Yeah, I appreciate the efforts. I think the key is, we always focus, make sure the health and the safety is protected. That's a nut most. But when they say that, with that being said, to piggyback on what Joanne has mentioned, is perception is reality. So, if the perception's out there, it's being held up here or there, or whatever the case may be, that's the reality, and turning it around is like turning a ship. It just takes a little while to get that thing kind of turned around to get there, you know, as far as the reality is concerned. But I truly believe communication's probably 99% of it, because what I was running into problems, what happened is, is the owner didn't realize what the architect was doing, and, you know, because they were saying the city was holding up, and vice versa. I think it's important, and I like the move, that if for some reason, if you've got 40 or some odd comments, I would suggest you may want to call them up and make sure they're clear on what those revisions are, because then you get to the second, now they're down to 20. You send it out, now you're down to 10. Now, you're in your fourth review, which is way too long, and then they say, that's just extending the process, so why can't we get this through? So, after the first So after the first one, if there's a lot, that's probably an indication that maybe they don't quite understand, you know, what the requirements are. You bring them in and make sure they clearly understand. So you don't, you try to limit the ones that go beyond two. You know what I mean? Because two, you're fixing it up. And I think that's the critical part, because to me, I would like to see us having a reputation of being, hey, everybody wants to come to Goodyear. Why? Because it's the place that they're business-ready, they're ready to take care of the business, and the process is, you know, streamlined. So again, it's gonna take a while, I know, to turn that ship, but at the same token, you know, I think it's important to try to minimize how many of those things are going back and forth, and the communication, to me, is critical. Thanks.
Bill?
I've got actually two comments, one to kind of piggyback on Joe. Working right now with a client in the southeast that is having the exact same troubles, their architects are submitting plans that have 40 or 50 revisions that are required, and the plan view staff is really struggling with, we're essentially drawing up the plans for the building at this point. And so it's not just a West Valley problem, it's certainly not an Arizona problem, but... So I find that very interesting. But on that same note, we had a conversation with this particular community about their development timeline, and Christopher, you mentioned, or maybe it was Rebecca that talked about the amount of time that it takes to do, you know, this part and then this part. I don't remember what those are, and I know we've got next week, part of the development process. Can we get a, I'm gonna say, a list of what those timelines are, or what the, I'm gonna say, the standard? You know, our, you know, the goal is, we're gonna do a site review in seven days, we're gonna do building review in, you know, 21 days. And then to kind of piggyback onto that, who set those standards? And I think, Christopher, you were kind of getting at that when you talked about what's our administrative capability, and can we just get these things done? And you're looking for policy direction. Well, the policy direction on that particular issue can come from the council as well, that if we've, if we've got unsustainable standards, maybe we need to have a discussion about that. If the standards are too big, maybe we need to have a discussion about that. But that's a, those are policy discussions, and I think those two things go together. So if we can get that before next week, at least for me, that would be helpful. I don't know if it's for everybody else, but thanks.
Carolyn?
Well, and I think your customer, or your client, every time they see they have to come back and answer more, they're seeing dollar bills. Because every time they have to bring in their engineer, or their architect, or whatever, there's a cost to them in that. And then all of a sudden, you're automatically a protagonist, because not only are you costing them time before they can become operational, but it's also costing them actual hard dollars. And so I think that's something else to be sensitive to.
And one last comment. I think the initial meeting, I remember, and I've often told the city manager, sitting when I first arrived, I'd go down to economic development when a customer, and I sat at the table and listened to all the departments talk until the client. And most of the time, I felt, when the client left, they really didn't know what they had to do. Because they have a tendency, when you're in a meeting like that, if you don't have something to show them or something, they walk out and say, what was that they said? You know, and who do we have to? And I think that first initial meeting that you have is extremely important, that you have pretty solid understanding, not of all the details, but for the most part.
If I could just highlight something with what you just said, the two things, one is about the proactive nature, and being proactive about issues that come up and arise, like you were saying, but the meetings that you're talking about, it's also about leadership, and it's about establishing who your team is for that. That's one thing that we've done recently to establish, is when a project comes in, who's the team? Who's the leadership of that team? Who's the project manager? Who's the one point of contact that that customer has that they know they can always go to that person? And we went, Harry and I had a meeting with a site selector recently that said, we actually mandate that. If we don't have that, we won't come there. So that actually is, it's a leadership issue, too, and making sure that that staff is assigned properly.
And as they get up out of the chair, you just say, one more time.
Exactly.
Do you understand? Do you have all the facts? This is what you need. So, thank you. Appreciate that.
So just to conclude, we know this is just a start, and we look forward to reporting our progress to city management and to you throughout the process.
And I'd like to just mention again, something that Christopher talked about a few moments ago, was that we will be coming back several times here in the next few months to discuss the entire process with you, along with growth policies, design standards, things of that nature. They'll be in study session, work session-type environments, sort of mini-retreats, and it's really to reach out and find out thoughts on those types of things. So we're very excited about that next step. And this will basically conclude our work session for this evening regarding the continuum and our responses from our customers, but we are absolutely happy to answer any further questions you have and hear what you have to say.
Well, I'm pleased to hear the direction you're going in, and what Bill said about, I can remember back, oh, it must have been 2006, we had this same thing, that the council did not understand all the different items that a customer had to go through or do. And, you know, when you think about something, you could even look at our theater, all right? Because that's where we got comments, when that fence went up and those comments, nothing's happening, nothing's happening, nothing's happening. So nobody even understood what you had to do, and I'll call it the dirt, how that preparation had to go, and how long that takes. There's a timeline there that you can't make, because there's certain qualifications that they have to meet, right? And so most of it, we don't know that. So when somebody talks to us, I know a little bit of it from my past, but so that would be very, very helpful, to have some kind of an example of, maybe one on homes, one on a business, and, you know, just have, just...
Kind of a timeline.
A timeline of the two, and with understanding, and the process. And they actually put each of the steps through for us at that time. I don't know where the paper is that they gave me, but it was some time ago, so, all right.
Absolutely.
Any other comments? I think we're all really happy you're going in that direction, and so...
Thank you very much.
We wish the staff well, and we know it's always tough when there's changes, and there's, you know, you gotta do things a certain way, and it's not always easy, but I can tell you this, council would be most appreciative if we get to the point where we have a lot of happy clients walking around and less phone calls, right?
Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask, is that presentation on the city website?
It's in there.
Because when I go to goodyearaz.gov and go under government, and go under agendas, and go in there, it is not there. The staff report's there, but the presentation's not there.
You don't have it on here?
I don't have, I print everything out, and I can't print from what y'all use. I have to go into the city website, then go under government, go under agendas, and print it out that way. Otherwise, you cannot print from the iPad in the program we're using for the council.
Councilmember Campbell, those presentations go on tomorrow after the council meeting.
Well, I'd like to have it before the council meeting so I can see it.
And you're able to get that in SharePoint?
What, we mean these? No, not to print out, I can't.
You should be able to print them out in SharePoint.
Okay. Well, let's have another lesson, because it's not here for the public. So the public doesn't get it till after our meeting, right?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's go on to 3.2. This item in tonight's work session is an update on the noise and reevaluation study that is being conducted along the north side of Interstate 10 from State Route SR 303 to Australia Parkway, Pebble Creek Parkway. And we, Rebecca's back again, Zook, Director of Engineering, and Walt Kinsler, Project Manager, to present. Welcome.
Thank you. I didn't have to go very far for this one.
Go.
Oops.
Okay.
Okay, so I just wanna recap what we're gonna cover this evening. I'm going to, I'm happy to introduce Walt Kinsler, which is our internal city project manager for this project, as well as Chet Mon, who is our noise consultant, and he's And I just wanna, real briefly, just mention that Walt does come to us with, he is the principal of his company, and he has 15 years of experience specific to environmental noise studies. That is throughout the Arizona and Phoenix metro area. And so we're gonna provide you a brief update as to what's been done since our last council meeting, as well as provide you final steps in the process of where we go from here. And so this is, again, just a overall look at our study area, and on the left of your screen, that you can't see, is the 303, but that is the western boundary, extends over to the right side of your screen, which is Pebble Creek Parkway. And then you can see the I-10 freeway near the bottom, and then McDowell Road located just north of that. So you'll see our 13 sites identified with the red dots, and it identifies the addresses. This project began about nine months ago, and it was the result of city and citizens' concerns that brought this forward. The homes that are identified as our site, study sites, those were comprised of volunteers. The volunteers were involved in a study that had been done by ADOT, and then in addition to information that was sent out by the city in the, I think it was the May-June timeframe, we also got additional volunteers. And so that's where we were able to locate these sites. The way that they are spread across our subject area was to gain a good representation of sounds throughout that area just north of the McDowell. So I'd like to expand that the last time I was here, we had 700-plus hours of noise level measurements. I shared with you at that time that we had a couple long-term studies that were going on at locations. We're gonna go over those results here very quickly, but both sites were for a week-long duration, so seven days, 24 hours a day. So the first location is in the Pebble Creek community. The location is over here, and I'm gonna recap the information that's shown on the graph. You have the federal threshold of 60, 70 dB, you have 64 decibels as the ADOT threshold, and then all of the noise readings that were taken throughout that week-long timeframe range in between the lower grayish line and the black line. So all throughout this area were our noise readings. So the next one is Almeria Road, and that is the same road, but it's over in the Palm Valley area. So here's the location. So again, similarly, you see the federal line, which is the blue, ADOT's line, and then you see where our noise readings were coming from. Now, I'd like to, I'm sure you're all noticing the spike we have here, and so certainly, I did as well when this information came in. I'd like to add that whenever we're taking noise readings, they have an audio recorder going at the same time. The reason for that is so that we can later listen back and see what type of noise. Was it a series of jets flying over? Because it has to be something that lasts longer than, I believe it's 15 seconds. So was it a dog barking? Was it a sprinkler going off? So what other normal residential noises could impact that? So we were able to pull up the audio tape, and it was a groundskeeper group, and you can very clearly hear the trimmers, the blower, the lawnmower, so there's a number of things, and we could very clearly hear that. So that was, that was the result of that. So let me, I'm going to now go back to our presentation.
Joanne?
I'm sorry, but regardless of that one spike, everything was really right with the federal level, wasn't it, on that one?
Looks below it.
Isn't the blue line, we don't have that one, right?
Oops.
No, we don't have those.
Isn't the blue line...
Straight one.
The straight line, isn't that the federal level?
It is. It is the 67.
Okay, so you're saying that the height, the highest reported one was that black that's going up?
Correct. So throughout the process, as we...
So the average was between the two?
There were spikes in readings, like, if I can remember, it was a Monday morning from approximately 9:00 to 12:00 that we were having the noise coming from the groundskeepers.
So what was the average between the highs and the lows that you're showing there? Do you have an average?
I don't have an average between the high and the low. I can tell you that all of the readings fell within the two lines. So on, let's say, from a Monday through to a Monday, this could have been the Monday morning, and then somewhere down here was Tuesday morning at that same time, and Thursday morning, and Friday morning, so they all kind of ranged in that area. These are the hourly averages of that given day. And so we showed those that were the highest during that hourly average for those seven days, and then what was the lowest hourly average for those seven days. So another Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday at that same time, it was down in the, I can't read that, 50, 50 dBs.
Bill?
But I, if, I'm thinking the same thing that you are, Joanne, but I'm looking past the spike, if you will. Most of that upper bar runs right on top of the federal, so, and I think that was your point, right? That even though that one's an anomaly, and we can, we can hear what that one was, the majority for this particular location was right at the federal guideline.
That is correct. And we were, for, there were instances in a number of the other locations that went over the state requirement as well. So with that said, that caused us to do the further analysis. And so that's where I'm gonna go with my, the rest of my presentation. This was just the remaining results I needed to share with you. So now, I am gonna shift out of the data collection phase and into the results phase. One thing I would like to add is that, now, I knew through my schooling and some of my experience about noise study, but I've learned a great deal more in the last nine months. One of the, I think, most critical things I wanted to touch on is, it regards the level of decibels and what someone, the human ear, can hear. And so a decibel level between 0 and up to 3 decibels, the human ear can barely detect. When you get to a 5-decibel change, that's easily discernible and significant. And so what that is telling me, and what I'd like to share, is that sound readings are on somewhat of an exponential graph, to where the more increase in the noise, so for 10-decibel change, it's perceived as doubling the noise or cutting it in half. And so those are just some interesting information that I'm gonna touch on as I move through this process. On the basis of that information, some of the que... On the basis of that information, some of the questions were focused on variations in the weather. And what I mean by that is not, not only temperature, but humidity and wind. And I've, I looked at and we received information related to changes up to 50 degrees in, so going from, say, 90 degrees to 40 degrees or from relative humidity of 80% down to 20. And I guess in our case, it would be 30 down to 5. But the, the changes in the variations in weather are most notably the further you are away from the source. And so what do I mean by that? Let me grab my exhibit here.
And I guess part of that you could even see on a jet takes off from Luke Air Force Base. That is when you really note that, depending on the weather and what runway and how the wind is.
So I said, the further you are away from the source of the noise, the most effect you will have from variations in temperature. So if I am located just north of I-10 and we see a drop in temperature of 50 degrees, there will be no discernible difference. It will have no effect on the noise. It won't be until I'm a half a mile away before there is even a 3-decibel level of difference. So keep in mind, 3 decibels, the human ear can barely hear. So in between, it's very minimal, the type of difference that you will hear. Because our sites are located 700 feet, maybe 1,500 feet north. It's not until we're at almost 2,700 feet away that we even hear or have a barely audible 3-decibel change.
And that was with the weather change?
That's with weather change. And that, again, temperature, humidity, winds. With that information, the weather changes are insignificant to our sites. The other question that came up had to do with the wall located on the south and whether or not there was noises that reverberated off that wall. What I can say to that is, when we completed these studies, the wall was there. So any effects that that wall had on the noise were captured in our study and have been contemplated.
That's just for the people on the north side, though, not for the people that complain on the south side. Yeah. Bill?
Rebecca, I think, I think that part is, is very important because the residents that were making the observation, were making the observation based on it wasn't like this before the wall went up. So the fact that we have done the study now that the wall is up and we did it to a far greater degree than ADOT did in the beginning is very positive and a good response for us. And I, I don't want to say you're glossing over that point, but you kind of glossed over it, that we did study now with the wall there. And I know a lot of ADOT's projections were based, were computer modeled. And that was another source of question, I guess, by the resident that, or residents that, well, now we built the wall, now we've got this, this whole other problem. So I, I think the fact that, that we've done this study and we've done it for, you know, 900-plus hours, as opposed to, you know, five sites for 10 minutes and we called it good, tells a much different story. So thanks for bringing that up.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Sherry? Does the traffic on McDowell Road affect any of this at all?
So the measurements that we took do not isolate that road. So it, I would say that there is impact from McDowell Road. We did not, our study didn't discern between the two. But I will tell you that when, depending on the distance and when modeling occurs, it, it ice, it attempts to isolate the noises that are coming from a freeway based on normal noises that you would have in a, in a residential area. And so it would take into account and it would have a standard temperature and standard humidity and standard wind and standard noises that you would hear and it would isolate those when it, when it does the modeling to project.
But that part of Dyson Road will be rubberized in the future, right?
Of McDowell, yes.
Yeah.
So what are the next steps with this process? I would like to talk about the fact that, and we've, we've stated it a number of times, that ADOT is going to install rubberized asphalt on the freeway mainlines. That's going to happen in the fall of 2016. It was 2018, but they have absolutely moved it forward to, to our happiness and to the citizens' happiness. So this is wonderful. But what, what will we realize as a result of that? We've touched on this before. There is a minimum reduction in decibel readings of four. There's a maximum up to 12 decibels that could be achieved. There has been a study that was conducted throughout the valley of all of the various roadways that were rubberized and there was an average of 6 decibels achieved. So I'm going to go back to when I talked about the 5 decibels being significant and easily discernible to the human ear. And our situation may be better because we have a grooved concrete out there. The roadway is tined and it's evident to everyone that it's quite loud. So again, the 6 decibels is average regardless of what the existing roadway was that it started from. So it can go up to the 12 decibels. So when I take all of this information, I'm going to go back to looking at all of the, the data that we've compiled, the six weeks of 900-plus hours. With the exception of the spike because of the lawn equipment, the highest reading across the board we had was 68 decibels. If you install, as it's going to be, the rubberized asphalt, we will achieve at a minimum 4-decibel reduction. That brings us to the 64-decibel level, which is the, the ADOT threshold. So our findings are that rubberized asphalt will provide an acceptable level of mitigation by bringing it to the 64 decibels, if not lower. In addition, the future design of McDowell Road corridor, based on everything that we've learned throughout this project, we will attempt to make design enhancements that take into account massing of buildings, landscaping where we can, groupings of trees, groupings of landscaping. There potentially could be the addition of some berming as part of the landscaping. So there's a number of enhancements that we can add to that corridor area of McDowell to further enhance the mitigation measures of the rubberized asphalt.
I, I should know this and I know that there is a definite cost difference, but have we considered rubberizing McDowell ourselves as we, are we doing, I'm not sure. Are we or we not? And, and with this in mind for the future, is rubberizing McDowell an idea as mitigation itself?
Absolutely. We actually have a requirement that any arterial street that is within, and I'll have to verify the number, but within 500 feet of a residential, it must be rubberized.
That's, that's our policy right now?
That's our city policy.
Okay, see, I didn't, I didn't realize that. All right.
That is correct.
So that is, okay.
And so what I can do is, I can, I can look to see when McDowell was last rubberized, if it, if it was just recently rubberized as, as part of one of the pavement management processes that we just went through or if it's on our list to do, but I will absolutely get back with you.
Because I drove it. I drove it and there was really a big difference when you went off where it was rubberized onto the other. So there is a, there is a patch there that has not been rubberized yet.
Okay, great. Thank you. So with that, the next steps are that over the next week or two, we're going to be completing the report, or shall I say, the consultant will be completing the report. We will also be holding a public meeting on November 18th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. and that's at the Eagle's Nest in Pebble Creek. And then we will be coming back to council with a final report. I believe it's December 17th, I'm sorry, 7th. And then again, what we're looking forward to is the installation of the rubberized asphalt in the fall of 2016. So with that, I would be happy to take any additional questions you might have.
Questions? Joanne?
Just, just one more question for the future. So we are here, here we are today. And, and obviously, we won't know completely after I-10's rubberized, after some of these mitigations occur over the next few years, landscaping, things like that. But will this be something that 10, 15, 20 years from now, we're going to, the future's going to have to go back through again? Because if we're close, even if, as you said, the highest hit was, was 68, even, even with rubberized, it's at the ADOT level. So when's the potential of that? Is it going to be the citizens having to be upset again over, over the sound 10 years from now? Or is this something that will come into play? Just, is there a, any kind of policy by ADOT or by the, I mean, what does the future look like in that?
Well, and if I could go back to originally, the state standards actually speak to the fact that studies are completed when you are within 500 feet of an interstate. Now keep in mind, that is when an initial project is going in and so it deals with when permits are issued. In this case, and I'll just, I'll restate, here we have, I think it was 790 feet difference. Here we have 1,000 feet. If we look on the south side, this is the area where the wall was installed. The, the homes are right up against, so they were certainly part of that study. So my response would be that as long as I'm here, this is going to be on, on my, I'm going to be very aware of what's happening and if we hear complaints. However, what was just completed by ADOT actually was above and beyond what is required by them. And so in, in this case, it was a, a reach out of ADOT and us and the citizens to make a point that there was a concern and that we did need to look at this. And the fact that it's understood today that the rubberized asphalt will meet the requirements and, and really at this point, that is the, the solution.
Any other questions? Last question, and are we looking at how we're going to, once the other, the meeting, the final meeting is done, are we going to do some media on this as far as, okay, so we have a plan in that direction? Great. Okay. All right, thank you very much. Great presentation. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that takes care of tonight's work session. It's a regular session that's going to begin at 6 o'clock. And then following that, you're going to have a special meeting, okay? All right, this meeting is adjourned. So you have...